Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here twice.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
I declare a quorum present, please stand and join in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I need a motion to approve the city council minutes of March twentieth, two thousand fourteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications and petitions, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? I have no written communique. Mayor's report, first item, citizens, police academy graduates. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could have the two thousand fourteen citizen police academy graduates join me up here, just to the left here. Thanks. We're also joined by Sergeant Dan Wilson, he's the coordinator of our citizen police academy. This year, we had our thirteenth class of the citizen police academy. We had fourteen residents of Wooddale that attended the class, and it always fills up, and we try and keep it to a manageable number so we can make it be the best experience for them. But, in essence, and I think one of them's gonna go into a little bit of detail as to what they covered, but they covered, they spent seven Thursday nights with us, for three hours a night, learning some of the ins and outs of the police department, and everything from being, going through the hiring process to, you know, the ultimate decision, which would be a use of force decision. So, they'll talk about that a little bit, but I want to thank them for spending the time with us. It's a very popular thing for our officers that want to do it, and not just the patrol officers, but communications personnel and supervisors. I think we had about eighteen different instructors that come in and teach different aspects of this. So, in addition to that, they also spent a three-hour ride along with one of our officers. So, you know, we kind of view it as a two-way street. As one, they kind of learn what our job is on a daily basis, and learn about how some of the things happen in the city of Wooddale, but we also learn a lot from them. What are their expectations of us? What are the perceptions of us? And how can we do our job better? So, we do have a plaque down in our training room for each of the graduating classes, and we have one here that's gonna be put up next to all the others, but it says, "To the thirteenth graduating class of the Wooddale Citizen Police Academy, two thousand fourteen, the following citizens have demonstrated extraordinary community concern and involvement by participating in the Wooddale Citizen Police Academy. Only with the support, interest, and interaction with the community can the Wooddale Police effectively deliver outstanding professional police services." And the graduates for this class are Garrett DeLuca, Mary DeLuca, Geraldine Hart, Ethan Hunt, Joseph Coles, Bonnie Kreisch, Albert Martinez, Kathleen Martinez, Melanie Mahia, Sharon Radomski, Amelia Ribinska, Ralph Wiggins, Ann Ziochi, and Martin Ziochi. So, I'd like to thank them for participating and being a big part of what we do on a daily basis. So, thank you, congratulations. They already wore the caps and gowns and had the graduation music. Well, not the caps and gowns, but they did have the music, and I gotta say kudos to Sergeant Wilson, and Cake, yes, to Sergeant Wilson who kind of revamped this program a couple of years ago, and really took it to a new level, and we appreciate all his hard work and the officers that were involved in it for their hard work. So, I think a couple of you had something you wanted to say, so.
I just wanted to say it was wonderful. We missed the class on Thursday evening of last week. It gave us a new appreciation for the police department, what they had to do as education. We got familiar with the K-9 unit, we had scenarios set up for us, traffic stops and what have you, and it just gave me a new appreciation for all that the police in the area do.
Thank you.
I would just like to read something that has been submitted to the Daily Herald on behalf of the Wooddale Police Department and the graduating class of two thousand fourteen. Police duties and services. Most residents of a town take these services for granted, know little or nothing about them. However, several of us Wooddale residents gained a greater appreciation for these men, women, and Laika who provided us these services. For the last eight weeks, we not only learned about the different roles and responsibilities of living the life of a police officer, we had hands-on and role-playing scenarios. Where else could we go from law-abiding citizens to a career-changing role of an arrested drug dealer, shop lifter, or even a prostitute? Or even walk into the Marriott Courtyard and instantly enter the middle of a crime scene and have to dust for fingerprints? On behalf of the participants of the two thousand fourteen Wooddale Citizens Police Academy, a heartfelt thanks goes out to our program leader, Sergeant Dan Wilson. It was through his commitment, dedication, and love of his job, not to mention the love of Cake, that the class of two thousand fourteen was afforded the hands-on insight into the trials, tribulations, and hard works, and a moment's decisions that go into a police officer's life. I would also like to call out and thank Chief Vesta for opening up his station and allowing us to be a part of his force. It was very fun and informative. As mentioned, the program lasted eight weeks and was very interactive. This was no classroom lecture course. This was, "You are a police officer, think like one, and make decisions like one." We learned radio dispatch, investigations, interrogations, crime scene, and participated in marked traffic stops. We also witnessed that some of our officers have a future in acting, as they reversed roles, and they were the bad guys that they usually encounter. During sessions, we learned about the different fields and specialties that exist in today's police force. Keeping a town safe is no longer an Andy Taylor or Barney Fife role. It is interaction of not only Wooddale's police officers, but the surrounding communities all pulling together for a common cause of keeping its citizens safe. One of the highlights of the class was to do a three-hour ride along. This was very interacting, and we all saw firsthand the views of the risks and the dangers in the police activity here in Wooddale. We did a few traffic stops, backed up other officers, and some of us even watched as cuffs were put on a few who did not obey these laws. I'm happy to say that our range work went quite well, and we did not have to list the services of the Wooddale Fire Department. We all managed to hit the targets and even have the paper copies to proudly display in our homes or offices. The one thing that stood out, though, was how much Sergeant Wilson and the rest of the police officers loved their jobs. It was evident in all the personnel we met along the way. The passion and commitment that these men and women have is unsurpassed. We thank you to all who welcomed us into your police station, shared your stories, thoughts, knowledge, and sometimes you're acting with us. Our town should be very proud of our police force who serve us so unselfishly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let you guys take this downstairs and put it up, but thanks again for spending all your time with us, and if you want to say thanks, or say goodbye to the Aldermans.
They're getting rid of us already.
They are residents.
Better than ever.
Better than ever.
You're like a new man.
Next, we have a liquor request from Forno Palace. Any, anything on that? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Are we opening another one, or?
No, no, this is a request, if we choose to do so. Trying to get consensus. We should bring it to the committee next week, or not? Go ahead, you have the floor, go ahead.
Could we get some more information what the hours of operations are, and?
We could if we choose to go to the committee.
Okay.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I was gonna say, given the type of business, the fact that it's relatively a new business, it came in as a bakery, kind of then went to a sandwich shop, and now they want to serve it. It's kind of too fast. We've had other businesses that awaited, and for lack of a better term, served their dues in the community five to seven years before we gave them that. So, I at this time probably not would be, would not be in favor of.
Alderman Wesley? Eugene Wesley?
The other concern I have, I meant to ask the building department, what is requirement on businesses for parking spots?
Ms. Henigan, can you?
We just sent somebody loving over by there for a debate. Go ahead.
It's very depending on the different uses, so that one's got apartments, the eye doctor, barber shop, and the bakery. We did look at that when the bakery came in for their business license, and they do need the required parking.
Oh, here's the problem I have with that. Right now, you go over there and count the parking spots, and I don't know if those other parking spots count because they blacked out, and even if you park in both directions, you're gonna hear the car going out there. I count only ten parking spaces.
Go ahead, Ms. Henigan.
There are ten in the front and twelve in the rear of the building.
Mr. Wesley.
The businesses aren't going to, the people that are eating, they're ain't going to park in the back, I'll tell you that right now, because there's a real sign that says, "Park in the rear." Alright, so, I would not support this liquor license.
Alright. I'll just start at the other end, Alderman Lazara, how do you feel, and should we go forward, or?
No, I'm in agreement with both Aldermans.
Alderman Jacob?
I'm in agreement with the other Alderman because of the parking situation.
Okay. Alderman Winger?
I would support the discussion at the committee to hear their case.
Alderman Catalano?
I also want to discuss it.
Four to three. We can give you, oh, you're a no too? Okay. So, there's five noes. We'll send them a letter, but we'll get you the hour. One other item that's not here is residents should receive the FAA petition about departures and arrivals at O'Hare, but we want to petition the FAA trying to get those planes up a little quicker, get them a little higher, reduce some of the noise, and possibly expand the sound insulation, but this is more about moving the planes up higher. Please sign those petitions and return them to us, or go online. Petition does give you a website, you could do it right online, or just put it in your water bill, and we will sort them out. Thank you to the residents. And Mr. Mermis, your report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one item. DuPage County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management visited the city today for Municipal Emergency Operations Center Tabletop. Just want to report that DuPage County was very impressed with all the city departments and their preparedness plan and our performance in the emergency action protocol. Also, I'd like to thank Wooddale Fire District Chief Tim Rucka. He also attended the tabletop. I think it's meetings like these that make us prepared for when the creek floods or for when there's polar vortexes or snowmagedons. So, I'd just like to let the residents at home that the city is very proactive and takes this emergency planning very seriously, and county does come out free of charge as well. So, and they did offer that they would be interested in doing a tabletop exercise with the elected officials as well, if we're interested in the future. That concludes my report.
And just to add on to that, I did see that staff took a few notes on a couple of things that we could probably tweak to make things better for us here. That was a very good exercise. Next, consent agenda, we have four items on the consent agenda, I entertain a motion to approve the...
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Anything on the consent agenda? Questions? Rocco.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Wooddale. Item number two, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for stormwater improvements in the not-to-exceed amount of thirty-five thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Item number three, approval of contract amendment number one, H.R. Green for Phase Two Engineering Services for the Irving Park Road-Wooddale Road intersection Safety Improvement Project in the amount of one hundred and five thousand and one dollar. Item number four, approval of pay request, partial number four, to Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated North Waste Water Treatment Plan Upgrades Phase One B Project in the not-to-exceed amount of nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Any questions? Rocco.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Woods?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Public health and safety, Alderman Roy Wesley.
No report.
Thank you, sir. Public Works Committee, Alderman Lazara.
I have one on my agenda.
Okay.
A resolution seeking to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wooddale and the county of DuPage and the village of Outgrow Village regarding the Bussy Woods Dam and Salt Creek Watershed Control Project in the not-to-exceed amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Is that your motion?
Second.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Go ahead.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have a follow-up that just to make sure I'm clear. And I believe you answered the question, the stormwater, we are not locked into doing the construction of this project.
Yeah, I'll repeat what I told you. Actually, I had, I was appointed to the county stormwater committee, I had my first meeting this week, asked a few questions, and like I thought, we are not locked in if there's construction on this project. If there is construction, they did say that, being it's a multi-jurisdictional project, they're gonna go for grant money, and they feel that they should receive the money if it's needed, not even sure if it's needed. DuPage is on board, they do want the extra modeling to make sure it does not negatively affect our reservoir. Once they're verified that that's fine, then they will proceed forward, depending on how the study comes out and what the benefits are.
I do want a follow-up.
Yes, sir.
The other question that I had, and I don't know if you did the phone call, if someone did the phone call, is there a reason why I had to ask about that, Alderman? What was their reason? Knowing that it is next time over, and they do share that reservoir?
Well, I don't know, I did not talk to Mayor Pryne, I know you mentioned you spoke to him, he thought he was still in.
Right.
I do know that Director Charlton has been out. And I think, Mr. Mermis, you talked to Evan, they were playing phone tag, and Tony out. Mr. Charlton has been out.
I had talked to the manager of ITASKA, they intended to be in on it. I think there's been a mix-up in the paperwork, but they intended to be in on it.
Go ahead.
So, in that case, our price still may go down then, if ITASKA joins in. So, we gonna prove this with, I have no problem proving this, providing that we put stipulation that we don't exceed twelve thousand five hundred, and it may go down.
Correct. That's a not-to-exceed, and if I remember correctly, when I, task was in the letter previously, our price was twelve thousand two hundred and fifty. So, I mean, so it's a not-to-exceed amount. It's definitely not, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Okay, yeah, we won't, we are not going. Anything else on that? Rocco?
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Finance Administration, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, I will ask that item number one and number two be tabled at this time, due to the fact...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Due to the fact that the prices came in a lot higher than what we bargained for, so it would go up for rebid, am I correct?
Mr. Mermis?
Alderman Wesley's correct, we did bid this program out earlier today. A representative from NYMEC, we met with him and went over the bids. They came back higher than we anticipated. We have one other opportunity to bid out again in June. If the bids come not to our liking at that time, we don't need to pass either one of these items, but June fifth would be the last time we could pass that, and if we don't pass these items, then we simply all just revert back to comets rates.
Alderman Woods, you want to make a comment before I...
Well, comment question, do we have that rate, or do we want, we don't want to disclose that rate?
Mr. Mermis?
Well, we have a current comet rate, but they're coming out with new rates later this spring, so we have the expected comet rate, and we probably don't want to comment on rates anyway.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we have motion to table. All in favor?
Is there a second?
Yeah, there was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no other business, approval of listed bills, April third, two thousand fourteen, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills, one million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand and five dollars and eighty-five cents. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on this? Alderman Jacobs?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
One's a question slash comment. Number one is sequence number seven, ninety-seven. It was for fifty dollars to garbage services, and I was told that this was, that we paid, we were short, we didn't pay them enough, so I'm just wondering how that slipped through, where we did not pay enough money, and now we owe an extra fifty dollars.
Mr. Wilson? Have an answer for that?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it was keyed in incorrectly. We were working with our accounting department for a couple of months to make sure that we did actually owe the fifty dollars. After we squared out, paid a couple more invoices, it filtered through. We went back and verified, we made sure all the ducks were in a row, and it was a keystroke error. Pretty unfortunate, but straightforward, nothing nefarious or wanton on anybody's part, just entered wrong.
You have it further? Go ahead.
I mean, do we have any checks and balances so that, you know, to be more careful in the future, or?
Mr. Wilson?
Well, sure, I mean, we try to be as careful as we can entering all the invoices. You know, the bigger ones, we try to check a little more carefully. You know, unfortunately, we don't go through every single invoice, there's quite a few in here, and compare it line by line to the ones that are in the list of bills. You know, we do the best that we can going through all those. I mean, unfortunately, I guess, you know, I'll say we're all human, and mistakes do happen from time to time.
You have a follow-up?
A different topic.
Go ahead.
In the list of bills, I counted four hardware stores and two office supply stores, and we have office supplies being purchased all over the place. Hardware supplies, when we hired our contracts person here, I thought we were gonna talk about having that person look into bulk ordering and trying to find one vendor and get the best price. Is that not happening, or why are we buying from so many different places here?
Mr. Wilson, want to take that?
Sure. Couple of things, one, yes, you are correct, that was one of the things that we were gonna work with the contracts manager on, on doing, streamlining some of those processes. You know, you mentioned the office supplies, a couple of months ago, we actually had four vendors we bought office supplies from, we're down to two now, so we're moving along in that regard. Some of the stuff out of the garage is now being bought in larger quantities. You know, it's, there's some culture that we have to get over, and there's also just the time to go through and find what can be bought in bulk, or what should be bought in bulk, and then what really needs to be just bought is, you know, the just-in-time methodology. One of the things that, you know, we tasked the contract manager with, that we, the staff were chastised for last year, was bidding projects out late, so we felt it a little more prudent to get the projects, you know, six, seven-figure projects on track, and then go through and catch the hardware stores on the back end of that. Also, the new Assistant Public Works Director's gonna be coming on, he's gonna be working with the divisions to also help try to streamline that. So, it is moving forward, albeit probably slower than some of all of us would like, but it is, it is on the radar, and it is moving forward, even if, like I said, not as fast as everybody would like.
I'll make a quick comment before I go back to Alderman. If we just go with one vendor, those pencils tend to not be as sharp, and our prices will start to go up. It's always good to have at least two vendors, if not three, just from past experience.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
And just, you know, a comment on that, I'm not saying we should have one vendor, but I count four hardware stores, of which every time we go to the hardware stores, we get to have a public works vehicle, or police, or somebody go to the hardware store. That's, you know, employee time being wasted, whereas if it could be ordered from one place or two places, we work out a deal to get the best price. And again, that's why I thought we, you know, was gonna be one of the duties of the contract manager, so. And one other question.
One other question, go ahead, another bill?
Not a bill, just a question. As far as, when we, I see office supplies on here for like twenty-five dollars for, you know, say, public works or PD, who actually looks and verifies that the stuff, you know, was approved and bought?
Mr. Wilson?
Is there a department head that does that, or?
How do you, how do you mean purchased and, or approved and bought?
Well, I mean, if there's a bill for twenty-five dollars for office supplies, and they bought, you know, stapler, whatever, is there somebody monitoring this, that, you know, people aren't taking a stapler home? Which I'm not saying they are, but just as an example, and who looks at that stuff?
Well, sure, you know, every invoice that comes from any operating department is signed off by the department head, so it's incumbent upon the department head to verify that those goods or services, depending on the nature of the invoice, are received and being used appropriately. The office supply companies in particular, we get the pick list, the shipping list, and, you know, you know, we have to make sure that things aren't backordered, we're not paying for backordered items first, whatever. So, we do have to go through and verify that what was in the box is actually what's on the invoice and matches the packing slip, you need your basic PO, PO and requisition tie-out. So, the department heads are ultimately liable for that by signing off on the invoice.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Woods, you had your hand up.
Yeah, most of the things Alderman Jacob touched on, I'll just go over a couple of them. I mean, one is, you know, to reduce the time people are running around, not how many vendors, so. And then, of course, reduce the cost, but the statement you made, so do we have, have we made it a project or given somebody the task of finding out how we can pare down? So, in the case of the building department, the police department, the public works department, the sewer department, each one of them having a memo or a task, and go, okay, look at your stuff and what you buy and purchase, and come up with a list to maybe pass into Jeremy, because he's not even gonna know what they do and what they buy. So, if we initiate at that step, I know it's gonna take a little while, and culture's probably gonna be the hardest thing to change, because it's just so easy to go, okay, I need a screw, and I'll just go drive to the hardware store in Outgrow Village, because the other one doesn't carry it, or it's not close to the coffee shop, whatever the reason is. So, have we done that? Do you know?
Mr. Mermis? Mr. Mermis?
We have done that, as Brad said, we've been prioritizing with Jeremy. He has only been here about eight months, so he can only do so much at once, but we have tasked him with that. There's actually a little thing in Microsoft Office called...
Can I, can I just ask, will that be in play by May 1st's budget, or is it down the line?
Mr. Mermis?
We're working on it right now. The winds of change move slow. It's not just, oh, on May 1st, it's going to happen. It's, we're working towards that, yes. So, no, by May 1st, it's not going to be a hundred percent.
So, is there, could you give me some idea when that may happen?
We're working on it now, and we're trying to get more streamlined during the course of this next fiscal year.
All right, thank you.
It'll go faster if you just check off the tasks.
Anything further? Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Don't we have a company that comes in and fills the, in the public works department for screws, bolts?
Mr. Wilson, or Mr. York? Anybody know that one?
I mean?
Who wants to take that?
I, I would defer to Mr. York, but my understanding is we do not. There's not parts, containers in any of the facilities or anything like that.
Okay.
Go ahead, you have a follow-up?
Sure, because there are companies out there that come to your place, just like the first aid kit. I mean, we were getting ripped off on that. I sent Chief Vesta to another company, and now we're saving some money, so.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I mean, we could probably sit here for a couple hours and, and tell stories of, you know, sure, you know, but it, that's something that we're looking into. I know it's, it wasn't playing in the past, and they felt they were getting ripped off, and so they did away with it. And now, with the other side, we're going and buying one or two at a time, it's not the right way to go, so we're going to, the pendulum's going to swing back. So, you know, purchasing and procurement's a, I guess a pendulum's the best way to go. You know, there's, there's, you know, extremes on each end, and then you come to the middle for a while, and you go back and forth. So, that's one of the things that is being looked at, but it needs to be managed appropriately and things of that nature, so.
I have one more bill?
Yes, go ahead.
Another bill?
Continue.
National seed. I know this is probably going to be from that.
Go ahead. You got a page number?
Page 12.
Page 12, okay.
Forty pound, forty bags of 50-pound of ice melt. I'm thinking that's rock salt.
Mr. York?
And then, might as well answer the second one of 12 50-pound bags of whatever, and nine, eight bags of?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Yes, I believe those are both ice melt bags, bags of rock salt that we had purchased. No, we purchased a skid right towards the end of the year, because we had run out around the 1st of February. We purchased another skid, so that would be what this is.
So?
Go ahead.
I guess my question to you is, and if we're using rock salt, buying a skid of rock salt, what would you use that for? And why wouldn't you use the road salt that we?
Yeah, this is the bag salt that we would use at entrances to the, the building out here. We provide some to the police department for over, at their entrances, at the entrances to our other buildings in town.
So, that's, that's calcium chloride then?
It's got some, it's a magnesium, calcium, chlorine mixture, yeah.
That would go to my second question, then, on the other stuff, then, the 12 bags and the eight bags.
I'd have to look at the actual invoices to see exactly what those were.
I'm kind of thinking that it's a kind of fertilizer, because it says 36-0-6, and you guys are bringing it down as ice melt, melt at 3850 a bag? You could get back to me after another meeting, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the invoices to make sure what those are.